Welcome to the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the Accessory Agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, September 13. We can have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Skilman?
Here.
Councilmember Deluxo?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Here.
And Councilmember Landman?
Here.
And if you'd all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all. Mr. Berich?
Yes, sir. I'd like to speak on this item.
Mr. Berich, you are certainly welcome to speak on this item at the end of the agenda under the non-action item.
According to the Brown Act, I'm able to speak on this item during the item.
I'm allowing you to speak on the item on the non-action.
Is that Brown Act clear, though, sir? I just want to bring it to your attention.
I disagree with you. Thank you. Now, I'm looking for an approval of the minutes.
Move to approve. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
By the record show, that's 5-0, and I'll move on to announcements. The city of Kattati has special open office hours among the evenings from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open for Business program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. In honor of Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121 or visit snomacountry.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and by appointment. For more information, call (794) 0305. Citizens interested in receiving City Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com and follow us on Facebook. The city offers a variety of recreation programs for all ages. See details on the city's website at ci.kattati.ch.us. Oktoberfest is scheduled for October 8, 2016, in La Plaza Park. Family Fun Day at the Laguna Treatment Plant is Saturday, September 17, 2016. Everyone is welcome to join the fun, take a guided tour of the wastewater treatment plant, and participate in hands-on activity. It's a very difficult announcement to say with a straight face. Graywater Workshops, September 24, 2016, 9:00 and noon, 35 Stony Point Road, Santa Rosa Town. This free graywater workshop is presented by Santa Rosa Water's expert staff. Tensies will learn how to install a simple graywater system that uses the wash water from your washing machine to irrigate your landscape. Workshop is open to anyone interested in learning how to install a simple laundry to landscape system. City Kattati water customers are eligible to receive free plumbing parts. Kattati Fall Curbside Cleanup, October 17 to 21, 2016. Kattati residential customers may place their extra garbage as contained in bags or boxes at the curb during this week for collection on a regular collection day. And now, we'll move on to proclamations. I would like to welcome Dr. Sumida Mona Kana. Welcome. This proclamation is from the City Council of the city of Kattati to recognize Fall Prevention Awareness Week. Whereas falls are leading causes of injuries requiring hospitalization or treatment and injury-related deaths in California, with a vast majority of these occurring among older individuals, and whereas falls are preventable when education awareness and intervention are put in place, and whereas the nationally ranked, evidence-based, a matter of balance program is sponsored by the Snoma County Area Agency on Aging, with partner agencies and trained volunteers to raise seniors' confidence about their balance and increase their activity levels to reduce risk of falls, and whereas injuries from falls are a community health problem with many organizations, agencies, healthcare providers, and individuals working to raise awareness, provide resources to prevent falls, and help those who suffer from complications from falls, and whereas the first day of fall, September 22, 2016, has been declared National Falls Prevention Awareness Day, and the 2016 theme is Ready, Steady, Balance: Prevent Falls in 2016, and whereas by legislative resolution of 2008, California has established the first week of fall as Falls Prevention Awareness Week. Now therefore, be proclaimed on this 13th day of September, 2016, by the City Council of the city of Kattati, that the week of September 22 through September 28, 2016, let it be Falls Prevention Awareness Week in Kattati. Thank you, Dr. Kana, and I present this to you. Any changes?
No changes.
Thank you. And now, we'll move on to citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on a consent calendar or any matter not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2016-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. And with that, I will open up citizens' business. Ms. Alderman.
Well, here I am again in this chamber. I've nicknamed this place "The Torture Chamber." Let's just say I don't have warm and fuzzy feelings about expressing myself in this room. But I am gathering up enough courage to do so because I still believe there are issues to be brought to the attention of the council. Maybe I have one ounce of hope left that you will do something positive and bring about change. I can only try. As some of you know, I am in a paralegal program now. Last week, our discussion on who does laws benefit. To other students, it was easy for them to discuss. For me, I had a confused fog for a long while, and then I realized the fog existed because I live in Kattati. We have law, but we don't have order. Nobody knows what laws apply to them, when laws might be applied to their neighbors, and which ones apply to their neighbors. We don't know how the law is supposed to be enforced because depending on who you know in this city determines what degree laws are imposed. We don't have the right seating guarantee to us by the state. Those are ignored in these chambers. You make laws and rules in the city to benefit who you all want them to benefit. We have descended down into having chaos exist in this city. Last time I was here, you showed another aspect of this, in that you target anyone who is a threat to the status quo. Never mind you broke about a half dozen laws in your efforts to individually target me. As I have said, I was part of a citizens' group that filed a formal complaint against the city basically for this issue of the city making up its own rules and laws and not treating citizens equally. However, you all did a great fight favor to our citizens' group. You disregarded the laws of the state and misinterpreted the laws to your liking. This enabled our complaint to go back to the Attorney General's jurisdiction for a much higher level of review. Thank you for having the city attorney have lunch with the deputy district attorney, who was Santa Rosa's city attorney for many years, and trying to make this go away with a letter that most quoted, misquoted, and misinterpreted the law. It helped the citizens' group tremendously in our efforts to have our complaint be fully heard at the state level. If you don't think your actions are inaction, on many issues have hurt others, then you have been blind to what is happening in this city. Next door, we have a building that could be used to get the homeless out of the cold, like my friend who became homeless recently because of the domestic violence. It ended up missing for a few days. Is it on the agenda tonight? No. People are being traumatized by the predatory parking situation downtown, even handcuffed illegally without probable cause by the Kattati police. Is this on the agenda tonight? No. I could go on and on with this, but I don't have enough time. Maybe I still do believe in the law as the great equalizer in social justice. Someday, it will be restored in this city.
Thank you. Ms. Berich?
Good evening, and since the mayor will not address me as former Kattati City Councilman Berich, let me do so. I want to welcome the public to this meeting tonight, all our folks at home that are watching in, and I want the public to observe that this is a dismal public turnout tonight, very small turnout. There was, we had a public employee, Tammy Taylor, who was our city clerk for many years, and she recently quit her job. She worked for the city. The public paid the taxes for the city hall to exist. She was a public servant of the citizens. We, the citizens, had a right to say goodbye to her. We had a right to say thank you to her, but we were denied that right, not because she didn't want to be here, not because you folks wanted to observe her need to want to have a quiet exit. The real reason is that she was fired, she quit. She quit her job, and this is what happens to everybody who quits the city of Kattati. They do not get thank yous, they do not get cupcakes, they do not get coffee, they do not get accolades. They come through the front door and they go out the back door, and that's what happened to Tammy Taylor. Now, at the last city council meeting, we talked about the homeless. The homeless issue came up. For over 50 years, the city of Kattati has done nothing about the homeless issue in Kattati but give lip service to it. In fact, the city council said, "We have no facilities for the homeless. What are we going to do?" If you go next door, you're going to see six or seven meeting rooms next door and a perfectly good set of bathrooms that are never used. We have all kinds of facilities here. We have parking lots, we have fields, we have corporate yards, we have acres and acres of area for the homeless. So don't give us no crap that you have no facilities for the homeless in this town. Now, regarding this issue about giving citizens extra time to speak, I'm a taxpayer, and you work for me and the public. You will give everyone here equal time and the respect that they deserve when they come up to speak. You're not to give extra time to people who you like and not give extra time to people who constructively criticize the city. You play favorites. I don't understand why you just can't take some healthy constructive criticism and play fair. You have to give some people more time and not extra time to other people. Now, even Judd Snyder, who writes for the Community Voice newspaper, wrote recently that Kattati's unfunded liabilities are in the millions of dollars. It's in black and white for everybody to read. Why isn't the city council talking about it? I've been bringing it up for years. It's never spoken about during the budget meetings, and I'd like the city to address our unfunded liabilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address council?
Hi there, Maria Glass, 101 Ross Street. I'm here about a month or two late to say thank you because the fences along McGinnis Circle have been repaired very nicely, and I appreciate it, and I'm also very appreciative of how quickly the graffiti gets cleaned up because there is some very popular tagging spots in that area, and the city was doing a really good job about that. And I have meant to come over here and say thank you in person, and I finally did, so keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Some of you have been here long enough to remember when Arthur Street was a pass-through street and when some citizens chose to close it and then the city made it a permanent closure. There's a gateway, which I could have it wrong, but I believe it was there so that the fire department could get through in an emergency. It's never made much sense to me because I don't believe a car could get through the gate, but I'm assuming at least that it's a pocket park and a pass-through, and recently people have been parking all the way across, which makes it impossible for somebody to ride a bike through safely or use the pass-through, and if indeed the gate is to be opened in an emergency, having a vehicle there would be somewhat prohibitive. Also, on Marsh Way, there are a number of houses that were built in the last 15 years. A great many of them are having the siding replaced. It's a little scary to me to think that housing has been built and in less than 20 years it's literally falling apart. I would hope that when you're putting developments together that there's a little bit more professionalism so that the lifespan of the siding in a house is longer than 15 years. There are some major things in terms of signage, large signs saying that Old Redwood Highway was closed when, for the most part, it wasn't closed, talking about parking, and parking that essentially contradicts itself. Temporary parking signs are in place, but then there are A-frames put up saying temporary parking's closed and you'll be towed, so it's very confusing for people. Right out here, you have a school zone speed right at essentially the stop sign here going eastbound. It says "School Zone." About 10 or 15 feet down on the west side, it says "End of School Zone." Well, to me, a zone is kind of potentially right at the stop sign or the cross street. Having two signs telling you different things is somewhat confusing. Your signage should pretty much say the same thing and stick to the same story. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address citizens' business? Seeing now, I'll close citizens' business. Any comments? Councilmember Landman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I wanted to check back in with the staff and see if we could get a report back. I know we talked about this last week, the confusion that exists that we've had some concern about for some time now with parking behind the former bank building, and I know there was going to be an outreach to some members of the businesses down to make sure there was some clarity on all the businesses. Last time I was able to check, and it has been a few days, but I believe the Redwood had complied rather nicely. I didn't notice anything else, although I could have missed it depending where they placed it. I wonder if you could just give us a little update of that and specifically also the hours now, because I know it is open during the day to help the businesses during the construction process, so we can have some clarity for the public.
Yeah, my understanding is the outreach occurred, although it was up to the individual businesses whether they're going to post it or not on their windows, and in terms of the hours, that's just what the property owner was willing to do, and it's been a, it's been an okay solution, but probably not great because it would, you know, it would have been better ideally if the property owner would have allowed 24/7 parking there, you know, because it would be less confusing for people. The construction is essentially done at this point, and that temporary parking is going to go away here shortly, actually next week is when it officially expires. So, we're working, we have been talking to some of the businesses downtown, and we're working through some possible solutions on how to keep people out of that parking lot so they don't get accidentally towed. I don't have anything concrete to report at the moment as to what we might do, but there's, we're working through the private property issues around the possible solutions.
Right. I understand it's not our parking lot, we don't control it, and the long-term, the tools we have are kind of like using sledgehammers. They take forever and they're rather big, but nevertheless, it would be nice to have at least some very consistent signage, number one, I think, for the public. I don't know what control we have over that, but that seems like a short-term thing we could and should do, especially with this upcoming change, because I know some people will look and say, "Well, wait a minute, I thought it was open during the day, now it's not," and that's an expensive ticket. The next step passed out, the direction at least I'd like to see, would be if we could do something to get that open. I believe you mentioned that the property owner expressed to you that he had concerns about vandalism, and that's why he did not want to allow parking back there. I wonder if there's something we could do about offering perhaps more regular police patrols or something like that to alleviate that concern, if that's truly the concern. It may be an insurance-based thing, which then we don't control.
Yeah, I mean...
Excuse me, I was just wondering if it might be beneficial to have this as a future agenda item?
Yeah.
Could be at the next meeting because it sounds like there's quite a lot of information that you'd like to convey.
I think so. If we could bring, because we've talked about this a while, we've done a few measures, and it would probably be a good time to both see where we're at and see maybe what we can do with it going further because it doesn't seem to be going away. Thank you very much.
Ms. Alderman?
I just would like to clarify, Tammy Taylor did retire. She did not quit. She retired. She is enjoying her retirement. Anybody that stays in contact with her will see that she's enjoying herself and is having a lot of fun, and it was by her choice, which was mentioned the last time, it was by her choice that she did not want to have cupcakes. She wanted to leave and say goodbye to everyone here, and that was by her choice.
So, yeah, she did retire, and actually, she's, it's kind of annoying how much fun she's having when I talk to her, so that's the life of a retired person, though, right?
Ms. Alderman?
[inaudible]
No, no, we're not going to get into it. If we do, we would have to agendize that, and that would be a future date, but thank you anyway. He made a comment. Thank you. Okay.
[inaudible]
That's, no.
He's making a [inaudible].
Okay, now, I have a couple of things regarding the citizens' business. First of all, Ms. Glass, I'm glad to hear something positive from citizens coming up to the community and telling the council and the staff that they're doing a great job. Thank you very much. It's appreciated. Secondly, I wouldn't call you a former council mayor, council member, but I would call you a recalled council member, Mr. Berich, because that's what you are. You're a recalled council member, so I wanted to get that clarified for you, and I know you're on your best behavior because it's campaign season. We give extra time to people that may need extra time on a subject under reasonable accommodations. If you have a particular reasonable accommodation, you could certainly address that with the staff, and we'd be more than happy to try to accommodate you on that. We don't play favorites, and that's how we do it.
You didn't do Scott Favors, sir.
Thank you. So, and I think we talked about the signage issue, so now we'll move on from citizens' And now, we will look at direction of future agenda items. So, maybe this is the time we would look at a parking issue there?
Yes, in responding to the issue of parking, which was brought up during public comment, I think we've waded right into something that should be a future agenda item, so I'll just say that out there again. I'd like to see that come back when staff have something good to bring us.
Ms. Alderman?
And are we still on track for bringing the homeless issue back? Because I know that we would like to have that, and I believe it was October is what we were shooting for. Is that still...
Yeah, we're actively working on it. We'll be back soon.
Councilmember Lawson? Councilmember Skilman? Thank you. Okay, now, let's move on to our consent calendar. Absolutely.
Yes, council, I'd like to speak on item B, I believe it is, regarding the police body cameras. I'd like you to pull this item because, as I requested in the past, I think it's important that our police chief wear a body camera. If the police chief wore a body camera and turned it on whenever he felt that there was a ruckus in this room, or he felt he had to accost somebody or detain anybody and lecture them as to what he believes the law is and threaten people with the rest, that body camera should be on, and I would like you to pull that item and discuss why is it that our police chief is above wearing the body camera, but his entire staff does not have to wear one? And if he is going to wear one, I'd like the council and the police chief to make an acknowledgement that he is going to wear one, and what he does in public when he's approaching the public or he has a suspicion of a crime being committed, that he turn that camera on, because if he does that, I believe he will save the city of Kattati hundreds of thousands of dollars in possible litigation fees. Okay? And I can tell you, if the defeated ex-mayor, Lisa Moore, was here tonight, defeated soundly in election, I think she would agree with me.
This is on the consent calendar?
Absolutely.
This is also on the body cameras. It would have helped with the situation with the parking lot. There are laws that are not being followed and by the police officers. I sent them all to you. I don't know why you're not acknowledging, and that would curb it. And we, there was a bunch of civil rights issues too with that situation with Scott, and you guys need to have this on tape to defend yourself. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address the consent items? Okay, seeing now, I'll close the public comment on the consent items. I believe on the parking lot issue, the body camera was on, and there is video of that. Thank you very much. Am I correct on that?
That's accurate, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'm going to make a motion to approve items A, B, and C, but before I do that, the issue of the police body-worn cameras is simply about upgrading storage of the media, and that's all we're addressing tonight. The other issue that was brought up by Mr. Berich is something that can be addressed in the future, but that's not a reason to pull this item. It's a completely different topic. So with that, I'd like to approve items A, B, and C on consent.
Second?
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
By the record show, that's a 5-0. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to the regular agenda items. Mr. Obed, will you be presenting this?
I will be, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this item, as you know, is the amendment to the Snoma Clean Power Joint Powers Agreement, Amendment Number Three. And just as way of a little bit of background, which is, of course, it's in the staff report, but I'll touch on the high points, is that Snoma Clean Power was initially formed in response to a desire for local control of our electric energy supply, lower rates and cleaner power. And as you know, local control keeps revenues in Snoma County where they can be directed to any one of a number of goals, including lower rates, purchasing cleaner power, and supporting the acceleration to transition to a clean energy economy. And Snoma Clean Power is a not-for-profit agency independently run by Snoma County and the participating cities of Snoma County, all of the cities at this point. And on October 13 of this year, the Board of Directors for Snoma Clean Power will be considering the attached amendments to the Joint Powers Agreement, and the staff report includes several attachments, including the summary letter of the amendments by the Snoma Clean Power attorney, as well as the current and proposed voting shares with the potential introduction of the county of Mendocino and some of the towns of Mendocino into the JPA, which I will point out, one of the reasons, you know, one of the key points tonight is that Snoma Clean Power is at a key junction point in its growth. This is where it's the first time where they're going to be shortly considering the creation of an agency that extends beyond the borders of Snoma County, and that's, you know, that's due... And that's, you know, that's due in large part to the success that Sonoma Clean Power's enjoyed. And it's, you know, it's pretty exciting. It's a pretty exciting time right now. And now with the JPA specifically, some of the items, and I'll just recount them briefly. It cleans up some of the old transitional language from the JPA. When the, when the JPA was first formed, there was some, there was just a bunch of transitional language there from being nothing to being an operating organization. That's getting cleaned up. It's combining two advisory committees into the community advisor, a single community advisory committee. And it updates some, updates and clarifies some recitals and supports energy procurement process by requiring the Board of Directors to establish procurement criteria, which the chief executive officer may execute energy contracts. And requires that the members of the Board of Directors to the JPA be elected members of the governing body of the entities that are participating, as opposed to currently where it could be either an elected member or an appointed member. So, in some cases, like a staff member appointed to the board. Allows the Board of Directors discretion regarding representation on, on the board, on what the board members would consist of for new participants outside of Sonoma County. And as you, as I believe you all know right now, within Sonoma County, there's a single rep for each jurisdiction. And so, it gives the board discretion to, to do a single rep from each jurisdiction or some other combination, which you see a version of that in the voting shares attachment, where the County of Mendocino would be one voting share and the cities combined for a second voting share, as opposed to each one having its own individual voting share, like occurs within Sonoma County. And then, although this isn't reflected in the draft JPA that's in the packet, the Board of Directors may also be considering some requests by some individual jurisdictions, including minor changes to some of the recitals, to clarify the goal of stimulating the local economy. And it's furthered by all of the Sonoma Clean Power goals, including the goal of providing competitive rates. And then additional language requiring a majority of the members of the new community advisory committee be appointed to represent the interests of Sonoma Clean Power customers as ratepayers. And then there's also another potential amendment that would be considered, which would allow the non-elected officials to serve on the Board of Directors. So, that's, that's also in the mix potentially. And with that, I will just say, thank you. I'm obviously available for any questions. And we have the executive officer of Sonoma Clean Power, Jeff Syfers, who is gracious enough to join us tonight and who also could answer questions beyond what Mark and I already contributed to the discussion. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, did you have anything that you wanted to add to that?
Well, we ended first.
Okay. Thank you. And do we have any questions for staff at this point?
Oh, wait till after public comment. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, at this point, I'll open up for public comment. Anyone wishing to address this item? Seeing none, I'll have a closed public comment on there and bring it back. It's still yours, Mr. Landman?
I have the sense I should probably kick this off. So, I think there's a piece of language in the city manager's report that hits this pretty well, where he talks about this being kind of a milestone for Sonoma Clean Power because it really is. And I do personally like to think at least that it is indicative of part of the success that we've had, this growth beyond our particular size. This, of course, is not something new or rash or leapt into without thinking. This actually goes back not only to the very first chair, Susan Goran, several years, three years ago, but well beyond that, actually, in the formative stage. There has been in the past a lot of interest in the part of Mendocino in being part of this in some way. And that's developed to this point where we're at this juncture. I think it's fair to say the concerns are fairly few. The benefits seem to be the largest thing that we see with this. Number one, you will see, or at least they will see roughly a 39% reduction in GHD emissions simply due to the cleaner power balance that you'll be buying with that program. It happens right there. That was, for our county, one of the absolutely largest, the absolute largest, actually, GHD reduction effort that ever happened and probably ever will. And what's interesting about it, it was actually done at a savings to the public, that we actually saved money on it. So, that's kind of a outside-the-box thing and a very good thing. So, there is that. That's a big benefit for the region. Perhaps less exciting, but just as good, a long-term, there is a modest, small, but still, in the long-term respectable savings of maybe up to a percent over time for all our ratepayers in the two combined regions. That's a respectable reduction in financial bleed. Basically, that may be small amounts of money, but it stays in everybody's pockets and then hopefully goes back out in the county here and benefits all of us directly and indirectly. So, you will see that. Lastly, I would speak very briefly to the only concerns that might arise and that would be obviously the issue of, we look at things like A-VAG or other perhaps organizations that grow very large and you worry about unwieldiness. You also worry about something that's been crafted largely for Sonoma County and has benefited Sonoma County to make sure that that benefit will still see there. I think that both in the actions of the board, looking forward to actually keeping some control, say, in the future, if in the event somebody wants to join, they actually, on a case-by-case basis, have the ability to decide what seats they will have. That's a powerful throttle to make sure that there's no runaway growth. It could be long-term problematic. That's a very good thing. Secondly, if you look at the balance of power in voting, it really doesn't change anything. I know I have heard a concern about the slide change. And if we look actually all together on packet page 33, I'll try and make this very simple. We have the votes, while I'll have individually. We also have weighted votes that are based essentially on size, electrical power usage. And as it currently stands, we have nine members and the two largest ones, obviously, of course, are the county and the city of Santa Rosa. They are the big dogs. And in recognition of their size, one thing that was agreed to years ago when we formed Sonoma Clean Power is that they have the right to call for a weighted vote. What this means is they have a good argument in which to get people to agree with them. They have a kind of a head start. All they need is to get a couple of people to agree and they have the ability to block or change the direction of something. And that's, that's a good thing. And what I want to point out is even with all of Mendocino joining, and Mendocino with the county and the cities joining, is roughly the size in terms of load, it's like the city of Petaluma. Proportionally, it makes little change. You have, instead of nine people in Santa Rosa having a 33% voting share, they have 29%. So, I think concerns about making sure that things continue to run well have been looked at and that this is potentially a very good thing for not only our county, but certainly Mendocino County. So, just wanted to get into a little depth with that if you have any questions. Mr. Syfers here, you can answer them much better than I can. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions?
Several. Thank you. Has there been, I don't even know where to look to ask this question, so I'm just going to kind of spin my head around. Has there been any kind of information gathered from Mendocino County of possible participants? Jeff, this is all you, I think, so.
Jeff Syfers, CEO of Sonoma Clean Power and resident of Cattati, so glad to be here. We have actually been on to all the incorporated cities. The way the law works is counties and incorporated cities are the governing agencies choosing for the citizens. And so, we've been to each of the cities and in this case, it's Fort Bragg, Point Arena, and Willets. Ukiah is incorporated, but they have a municipal utility and so they actually are like, more like Healdsburg, so they're not a part of this program. And so far, the County of Mendocino itself has voted to join Sonoma Clean Power. Fort Bragg has asked its staff to bring that item to the next meeting and seems inclined. Point Arena has also asked staff to bring that item to the next meeting and Willets is still debating the matter. So, it seems like reasonably likely, two out of the three incorporated cities will likely vote, maybe, maybe a third, and the county already has. So, there's, there's some good interest there. I think the general public outreach, what we found here in Sonoma County is the public really start paying attention after the decision is made. It's an unfortunate matter of democracy, but sometimes people don't start paying attention until the newspaper stories have already been running. So, we have done some of that outreach, but I expect a lot more of it's going to happen early next year. So, service wouldn't actually start up there until June. We want at least nine months of outreach to make sure the public are aware before any service starts.
Thank you. And don't leave. And so, I'm assuming like we did here in Sonoma County and certainly what we did in Cattati, is when the jurisdiction adopts the ability to go that direction and to use Sonoma Clean Power, it's still up to the individual residences to opt in or to opt out of PG&E or whatever, however the terminology goes. But it'd be the same method up there, I assume?
That's correct. Yeah. So, the community choice program becomes the default. So, historically, PG&E has been the default and only option. When a community choice program forms in California, state law requires it is the default. So, if a new person moves into the region or if you're serving that area and you make no choice, if the customer makes no election, then they would receive service from Sonoma Clean Power. If they call us or use our website, they can opt out and stay with PG&E. So, it's, it's at their election, but it's an opt-out program.
Right. Okay. Same thing. And are you aware, is Sonoma Clean Power aware that, and I got this kind of, well, directly from a neighbor, but I didn't absorb the entire conversation. They were called the other day by a company to provide gas. Again, so kind of the same concept as Sonoma Clean Power, but it was, it was a gas providing, yet it'd still be through the PG&E lines. Are you aware that there's somebody out there making these calls of residential customers?
Yeah. Turns out, gas and electricity are treated differently under state law. So, gas is in fact open to private market, marketing and electricity is not. So, if anybody ever contacts you to sell you electricity and they're not Sonoma Clean Power or PG&E, it's a scam. But if it's gas, it turns out there is an option for doing that and I'd encourage anybody weighing that option to consider it very carefully and read all the fine print. They are very often very expensive. So, be careful.
Well, that's good to know. I'll certainly pass that on. I think, I know I had one other question and it's kind of escaping me right now, so I'll stop.
Thank you. Councilmembers, come on.
Actually, no. I think they've covered everything, so thank you.
Thank you. I didn't have any questions for you, Jeff, at the moment. I did have another question for Mark. And looking at the, some of the proposals and looking at the CEO having the ability to purchase the power, currently it rests with the board in and of itself?
This probably comes back to being actually a Mr. Syfers question, so I'm going to, I'll kind of knock, toss it up in the air, then you can come hit it. How's that? But bottom line, basically, the board is in control of most big decisions, however, the power market, particularly with smaller purchases and adjustments and even some relatively large ones, happens on a very quick basis that isn't really amenable to the structure of a regular meeting board, especially one that has to go through a public process. So, more so than you'd expect, there has to be latitude for staff to be able to make those decisions. And we're, I think all the CCEs, as they're calling them now, used to be CCAs, now it's CCEs. We'll work our way through all the various letters of the alphabet, I'm sure. They're kind of finding their way through this and for us, we're finding this is going to be a lot more time-effective, not only for our business operations committee, but also for our staff to allow this. So, I don't know if that answers in general and perhaps Mr. Syfers can give you a little more in-depth than that, but that's the general lay of the land. It seems to be a best practice.
Yeah. Just to add a little bit of detail, so currently, there is a subcommittee of the board that reviews larger contracts before they're executed. But our council has informed us that doing that on a regular basis could actually create a bradak problem in the sense that it's a standing committee and it's, it's a content if that were to go on year after year would actually need to be made public. And so, that, that's really one of the core concerns. And so, the solution that our board has proposed is to develop much more clear standards under which staff can contract so that there's guidelines and limits and, and a much more clear policy governing those contracts. And then so long as you stay within that policy and get sign-offs from the proper attorneys, from our own general counsel, from our own expert staff in terms of procurement, and the CEO, then those contracts could be done and then reported to the board after the fact. So, it would, it would solve that problem in effect.
Okay. And then, Neil, the other thing was, I guess along the same line and regarding the checks and balances, on setting the rates temporarily? And if there's a significant shift in rates, I would imagine it would be to either up or down?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, what, what's proposed in the JPA amendment is that, is that I actually have, as CEO, the authority to set temporary rates on an emergency basis and then have them be required to be ratified by the board within 90 days. That is not a privilege I would want to exercise, except in, in the situation that did occur last year and this is what raised the issue. PG&E, so our customers pay two kinds of rates. They pay PG&E's rates for the wires and they pay our rates for the generation and they are on the same bill. When PG&E changes its rates, our customers are affected because they pay that component. The CPUC governs PG&E's rates. Our board governs ours. And the CPUC, the Public Utilities Commission, made a change to PG&E's rates that would have, actually did require that anybody producing excess solar energy was charged for the excess rather than credited. And it was an error of a minus sign in the rate. It was widely understood to be an error and the CPUC said, "But we can't do anything about it for a year. We're going to solve it next year." He said, "In the meantime, our solar customers are getting screwed." So, we brought the item of an emergency correction to a rate to the board and said, "That is the limited kind of situation that we want to use this tool for, but not to, to make a change that would substantively change the, the cost of electricity." It would be to protect customers from an emergency situation like that. So, I hope that's...
It does. And also with the ability to have it ratified by the board within 90 days.
Oh, for sure. Yeah. I don't want that liability.
Thank you. I didn't have anything further on this? If we have some direction on this particular, particular item?
Sure. Move to adopt a motion directing the city council representative, Mr. Landman, on the Board of Directors for Sonoma Clean Power to approve the proposed amended joint powers agreement and provides the city council representative, same guy you mentioned earlier, the discretion to vote on any additional amendments as appropriate.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Let the record show, that's a five oh vote. And we have no correspondence or pending legislation. And now we'll move on to the city manager's report. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, I'll start with some construction updates for the downtown specific plan project, which is otherwise known as the Gateway Project or the Old Redwood 116 Project or numerous names for it, but that's, that project is still moving along and we have in September and October, some coming improvements that you'll be seeing, including streetlights, the plaza monuments, the plaza mosaic, street furniture and crosswalks, including the in-ground lighted crosswalk at La Plaza. So, you'll be seeing that over the next couple of months and then also bike lanes as part of that. And when complete this project, we'll close key gaps, it already has closed key gaps, in the sidewalk along Old Redwood Highway, so that pedestrians have accessible sidewalks on both sides of Old Redwood Highway. And that includes the new 12-foot wide sidewalks, which you see out there today, and the trees, which you see out there already. And, and the entry plazas and enhanced crosswalks and bike lane treatments. So, it'll be a, it's already starting, especially when they start adding the vertical elements, which have been landscaping to date and some, and the walls there at the plaza, as they start adding the streetlights and the bus shelter and the, and the entry monuments and everything else, it's just going to, all those vertical pieces really make it stand out. You know, when you, when you see the cross, when you see the sidewalk going, it's kind of exciting, but then you're like, wow, that's just a big piece of flat concrete, you know? When you see the vertical element, it really makes it stand out and you really see it take form, so it's nice. The Old Redwood Highway South rehabilitation project, which is the one through our downtown, this project's largely complete with the exception of the crosswalks and the in-ground lighted crosswalk at Page Street. So, there's going to be a, a three to four week pause in work, so you won't see anything happening out there for three to four weeks until the, the crosswalk templates come in and they get those stamped and colored. So, there, there really won't be any significant, aside from when they actually put the crosswalks in, which is a pretty quick operation, there won't be any other disruptions in traffic down there. Fleety Ranch, this project is also nearly complete. The outstanding items are signage, the trash receptacles, the ones that are out there now are temporary trash receptacles, and punchless items. and punchless items. The next phase is building restoration and stabilization for the farm buildings. Like I mentioned in the last meeting, we're at 95% design plans for that, so that should be, that design should be completed shortly, and we see it coming forward for bidding in the very near future. And then, next, the Catati Water Main Project. This project is also well underway, and this was the replacement and upsizing of the water main on West Catati Avenue, essentially between Coen Court and Maple Avenue, and also installing a master water meter at the Rancho Catati Shopping Center. And currently, the contractor is switching over the services to the new water main in West Catati Avenue, as, not literally as we speak, but this week, they've already started doing that. And we'll do the final trench paving here in the near future, and then the contractor will either parallel with that, or after that, move to the master meter portion of the project at Rancho Catati Shopping Center. So that one's also coming, at least the major work is getting close to done there. You'll also be seeing the, for well 1A, that's our, as the name would imply, our well. It has a, it's one of our three wells, it has a storage tank on site, and that storage tank is being replaced. And it's adding a new tank there to allow for easier cleaning of sand, just sand accumulation that ends up in the tank on site there, without having to physically enter the tank for cleaning, which is currently what we do. So it's just a personnel safety thing, and time-saving thing. And then, the St. Joseph Sewer Main, in our master plan, we are, we're slated to upsize the sewer main. The design is essentially done for that, and we're looking to put that out to bid here shortly. So that's upsizing the sewer main in St. Joseph Way, and also stubbing out the water main from Alderhead into St. Joseph's. And this main, this wastewater main collects a lot of the wastewater from West Catati, north of 116. That's how it comes across from, it's kind of counterintuitive, it comes from the west side to the east side, then goes back to the west side to treatment. It's just, it's just the topography, that's how it runs. So, and then lastly, the meter-upgrade project, that project, as I reported before, was, is done, but just something that's nice, it's kind of a nice little thing I thought we had to add mention tonight, and that previously, when we had our point-in-time reads, so we, you know, and this is, this is kind of the typical way that every water system in the world reads meters, assuming they have meters. In California, they mostly all have meters now. But believe it or not, some actual water systems don't have meters still in California, that are, you know, they're quickly moving towards just that limited level of visibility into their water systems. And so we've had for forever, pretty much, water meters on, in our water system. And as you know, we read every two months. And so when we had customers that had large customer-side leaks, like a break, break in their, in their house, or something like that, that they didn't, or a running toilet that was running, and they didn't realize, it could add up to significant water over 60 days. And we'd only have visibility into that when we took the, when we actually collected the read after 60 days. And so, and only the most significant leaks we'd notice, because they'd be so much greater than the historical average for that house, we would see it and be able to work with the customer to fix the leak. And now, we are, with the meter-upgrade project, we're actually working with an average of 10 customers a day to fix leaks in their house. So it's a large, it's a large increase, but it's all good, you know, helping customers stop leaks on their side. So, you know, that's one of the most powerful, you know, savings, both water savings and also money savings tools that we have. So that's, it was a nice, one of the nice outcomes that we're seeing already on that. And on the planning side, we have several private development projects and building permitting. Like I mentioned a lot of these last week, or last council meeting, but the Ward Drive, those last three homes are being constructed, and they're expected to be done before the end of, before winter starts. The Oliver's facade and outdoor seating, the facade works complete, and the outdoor dining area and canopy still needs to be completed there. I, I'm hopeful that they'll get it done before winter, because it always makes construction easier when you're not doing it in a rainstorm. And the south, or Grav, Grav South, or I think it's South Grav, sorry, South Grav Brewery, that is at Redwood Drive, opposite Lowe's. So they're open now. They opened at the end of last week, and they're serving, they're serving beer, and they've done a fabulous job inside. It's really nicely done, the tenant improvements they did. So that, that's something they've been working on for a long time, and it's open now, so that's great. And then, Your Sweet Expectations, that's the caterer and retail bakery that relocated from Snow Mountain Village to La Plaza Street, opposite the playground at the park where the Yacht Club used to be, in Dreys more recently. And that should also be opening to the public sin. But they're, it's, you know, it's the summer-fall when they're busy with wedding catering, so they're kind of slammed with that. The retail operation's a secondary thing for them. And then, also, the Santero Way Apartments Project is in planning. That's the multifamily rental project, and with 5,500 square feet of commercial space, scheduled for planning commission on October 3rd. One other, Vala Pariso, which is now called Kessin Ranch, it's just an amendment to existing approvals. It's a 45-lot subdivision, an environmental review currently. The Catati Villages, which is at Alderhead 116, that is a mixed commercial housing development. And it's, it's in for a new design review, and we expect it to be, they're motivated to move that project into building permits, or grading permits, quickly. So we'll probably be seeing some action on that here in the very near future. And then, 8830 Old Redwood Highway, this is the property behind, to the south of Clovier Lane, the one I had referred to as Pink Viking Development, so that's, that's what they call their application. And that's 25 lot, currently a 25-lot residential subdivision. It's in the review process. And then there's also other smaller-scale commercial and residential entitlements and process for use permits, designer review, et cetera. But those are the highlights there. For just pure planning projects, assigned ordinance, it went to planning commission, and it'll be coming to council the next council meeting on September 27th. The code enforcement program, we expect that to be coming before council at the end of the year. Climate Action Plan, as you know, SETA staff completed the plan and approved the EIR, and it's been, it's currently postponed due to legal challenge, so I'm not sure when that's gonna be back on track, but probably sometime this fiscal year, we'll see it at the council. The Wayfinding Program, like I mentioned last time, groundwork has been initiated on this, and there's much more news to come soon. I expect we'll start seeing stuff on that in the very near future here. The Fee-Differral Program, that's already, that's already begun, and the work on that's already begun. And a proposed program is scheduled to come before council in early October on that. And the Building Code Update, that is also, their staff is also busy, busy working on the 2017 Building Code Up, Building Code Update, which is expected to come to council in November. And then, also, we are working on the website update, which is, which is underway, and you'll be seeing more on this as we progress through the redesign process in the very near future. The document management system, that's all been reviewed, and we have who we think is a successful vendor, which I expect in the next meeting or two, you'll be seeing it here at council to talk about that vendor. And this is the sire, we have a document management system called sire, that's no longer supported by the vendor. And this replacement system will enable far easier access to city records, both internally and eventually externally, for citizens or the general public that want to access city records. And then, safe parking, as I mentioned earlier this meeting, work is continuing on that, and I expect we'll be returning here to council shortly to discuss that more. And then, just a couple of quick updates on the rec program. We have a one-day camp for Camp Catati PJ Party on Monday, October 10th, and a three-day camp from Monday through Wednesday during the week of Thanksgiving for children's, children ages 5 to 12. And this is, these are timed for when children are out of school, and many families continue to work, because they don't get the same days off as the schoolchildren do. And preparations will also begin for the holiday events, including the annual tree lighting, and the city's first breakfast with Santa. And we're currently seeking sponsors to help us get more energy-efficient decorations for the park, and to help turn the Catati Room into Santa's workshop. And I am also happy to announce there that Ashley, our rec coordinator, was able to get a $10,000 grant from PG&E for the holiday tree lighting. So that was great news. And for more information on this, and all upcoming programs and events, rec programs and events, you can visit the Catati website, catatacy.org. And with that, I think I've talked quite enough, so be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Are you all familiar with what Mr. O'Beid was talking about on the Fee-Differral Program? What are we talking about? For the general public, and for those that aren't aware of it, we're looking to bring to the council ideas regarding developer fees, and deferring those from the initial upfront cost, so that the developers are enticed more to be able to put in a particular project, and not necessarily have those fees right upfront, but maybe spread out, you know? And so Damian's working on something like that to bring to the council and agenda as a future item. But, you know, something that might be more enticing for some of those areas that we do want to look at developing down the road. Thank you, Mr. O'Beid. That was quite an extensive report. I didn't, we're going to breakfast with Santa?
Yes, if you'd like, you can go to breakfast with Santa.
I would. That'd be great. I don't know if you guys have any further questions? Councilmember Landman?
I think my colleague is first. Trying to make it brief, then. First of all, that was a pretty impressive report. I mean, there's a lot going on, and a lot getting done here, that's pretty clear. I was tempted to ask our correspondent from the Community Voice here to print this all, but I think we overwhelmed him, because he finally gave up before the end of it and left. And I also recognize it would take probably a whole page to list it all. But what I wanted to ask is this. I noticed there's a lot of catch-up work, a lot of good infrastructure work that's part of being a city that's finally getting done. And I know a significant amount of it, we're only able to do it because now we actually have the fund to make the matching fees. We need to be able to use grants that ask for matching fees. I'm curious, can you give me a rough percentage, maybe, of how much of what's going on in the city right now is only happening because now we can actually meet these matching grants and take advantage of these things? I know there's quite a few things out there, most of the big construction things, I believe, were.
So with the exception of the water projects, like the water main and sewer main projects, which are funded out of the enterprise, I think it's probably, without exception, every other project is, well, certainly all the, there's a, there's a significant amount of projects that have significant grants attached to them, which we would not be able to do had we not had matching funds available. And then there's other projects, these are generally smaller-scale projects, that, that we wouldn't be able to do at all, because we just wouldn't have the money for it. Period. So, you know, a lot of this, or actually all of this, is, you know, thanks to Mr. G and the funding we have available.
Well, I think it's a good heads-up, because we look just at how we fund everything, even talking about what we're talking about, potential fee deferral. It seems like the way for everybody in this new economy to get things done is everybody has to bring something to the table. So this kind of gives us a chance to do that. So thank you for the update. I'm very impressed with everything that's going on. Very pleased to see it all.
Councilmember DeLusso?
Yeah, just a very brief comment. I was speaking with an individual from Synergy Homes, which is the Christopherson Homes, the project on the L section and East Catati Avenue. And they were very complimentary to the entire staff here at City Hall, from, you know, planners and community planners, and it was really, this was not, I didn't encourage any of this, it completely came out of the blue, where this individual came up and said, "Hey, wait a minute." And anyway, he's one of the, part of that leadership team with Synergy, so it was really a good compliment. You know, one of the things I had mentioned was that in the last few years, we've been trying to look at, you know, the, well, our policy at City Hall for new developments, and that, you know, we're, we're streamlining, things are getting a little bit easier for developers. And anyway, I just wanted to pass that on to the staff, because I thought that was a nice compliment.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Schimmel?
Vice Mayor Harvey? Also, for staff, I have had a couple of citizens share with me that they really appreciate having the sidewalks there, that it's so much easier for them to walk down, in particular, the area where Pete seems to be pretty popular, and now they are able to walk down there safely.
Okay. It's not really an action item, but we can take that on the non-action items at the end of the meeting. And now we will move on to city council member reports.
Thank you. On August 27th, I attended the Howard Park BBQ, and was complimented on my brevity of comments, but I did include folks who were not able to make it as well. So that was a really nice event, and the weather was good for it, so that was nice. On August 28th, I got to attend the Bachi Tournament for, with the League of California Cities, and I have to say, a lot of our elected officials are really competitive. But, I mean, overall, it was really fun. We had a good time, and it was all sort of friendly competition. So we did not bring home the gold, I'm sorry, but we did have a lot of fun. Then on September 8th, I attended the Habitat for Humanity dedication, which was a lot of fun to be able to be at the last, the fifth and final home dedication, I think I was able to make it, to all of them. So that was really nice to see it go from dirt to five homes with families in them. And it's wonderful to see how much work is put in by the other neighbors. And so that really brings everybody close together, that's whole sweat equity idea, and working together. I always tear up during the quilting presentation, so it was a lot of fun. There's two young girls in this family, and they were very excited about all of the gifts that they were getting that day. So it was a lot of fun to watch them and their excitement. And then, lastly, I went on September 10th to the Peace and Justice Concert at La Plaza Park. And I was told by several of the organizers that they really appreciated the city being able to waive the fees for the first time around, that they really appreciated that. It was a relatively small turnout, it was good for a first event, and they were commenting too, that they really, it was sort of word of mouth. But then it was amazing, as I went back at 3 o'clock for a band that I'd seen before, it was a gentleman who plays drums, and he's from Africa, and does a lot of native songs, and it was really fantastic. And I'd seen him before at Redwood Cafe. When I came back, I think the population tripled at the park. So it was just, it was really fantastic. And then it was great, because since it went over at 5, then people kind of went into the city and were looking for places to eat. So it was a really good event, and they're really hoping to bring it back and do it as an annual thing here in Catati. And we're really appreciative, and it was great keeping in the theme of having musical events here in the city. So anyway, just wanted to pass that on. They were really appreciative, and had a great time that day.
Thank you. Councilmember DeLusso?
Yeah, just one that I'm gonna report out on was the last ag and open space meeting back in late August. So that was a meeting where we had a roughly $2.5 million budget for any additional ag preservation, or open space, or city park projects. And these were from all over the county, and in unincorporated areas, but also a number of the cities. And when all was said and done, we actually had approved $2.9 million. And that was because there was a cost savings from two years ago, since this is a cycle every other year. And one project, when they were purchasing some land, came in significantly less than it was even appraised for, which is a steal, of course, especially in Sonoma County. So we just put that $400,000 in, we brought that to, this was a subcommittee, we brought that to the full advisory committee, which there was a very long discussion, but approval of that. And the only concern was that there was a hint from the board, the board is the board of supervisors for this group, and they, a member or two felt very strongly about a couple of projects that we only partially funded. And they, when it comes to the board for final approval through the, after the fiscal oversight committee, they will probably add to it. And I strongly encouraged our group, which we did finally go there, not to approve that higher amount, to go with the 2.9, because that was there. For precedent-setting reasons, we may never do that again in the future. And if the board wants to do that, that's their prerogative. And I would say, let's let them make that decision, not us make that decision. So finally, everybody So, finally, everybody did agree, but it took some, some serious arm twisting at that meeting, but we finally got it through. So, so there'll be projects announced, it's probably, it should be coming up in the next week or two, at the Board of Supervisors meeting, and I could make it public tonight, but I didn't bring my list, so I guess I'm not going to, that simple. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Harvey?
Just a couple of things, I also attended the League of California Cities Bachi Tournament, and we tried really hard, but we'll have to practice up on our Bachi skills. And yes, there was a lot of competition, but some of those people, they play like all the time, so it's sort of hard when we only play once a year. I too attended the Habitat dedication for the last house, and it was really heartwarming. I have to say, it was great for me to attend the first one, and I had my first grandson, and then this time I was able to bring my newest grandson to it, so it's, it's nice to be able to do that. And that's all I have.
Councilmember Lemon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things, a quick update from Lafco, we usually don't talk too much about that, but we actually had a decision last week, which was a rather big one, had some controversy to it, and it does impact a neighboring community in the region, so I thought I'd just quickly go over it. Briefly, Lafco did vote very strongly and very unanimously, actually, to detach several areas in the Russian River region from the Palm Drive Healthcare District in the neighboring city of Sebastopol here, without going a long story, and this is the bottom line, is that the neighbors up there, people who live in the Russian River area, have felt for many years that they weren't getting enough representation being given, nor service received for the amount of taxes they paid for this, and with recent changes in healthcare delivery, basically of the addition of the Sutter Facility up there, this made this even worse. So, to make a long story short, they were very motivated, they went out and got twenty-five percent of the voters in the area to sign a request to be detached, so the bottom line, the board agreed with that, the commission agreed with that, ongoing in the future, the citizens in that region still will be responsible for costs that already have been incurred, which they're aware of and fine with. But the main thing, and the thing that they were concerned about, any future costs that may be concerned by Palm Drive's efforts to continue, won't be accrued to them. So, I point it out, because it's interesting, we see an example of government actually helping taxpayers cut tax, you usually don't see that, and interestingly, in this case, probably wouldn't have happened any other way, so I wanted to share that. SETA, kind of goes back to what the city manager was talking about here, we're looking ahead, it's early, but we're starting to put a subcommittee together to assess the viability of looking at where we want to go with measure N, does it need to be extended, does the county want to look at that? And that's the twenty-year quarter cent sales tax, that sunsets in 2025, I believe. Been pretty successful, got a lot of work done with it, it seems to be well-received, and it's interesting, it, you get the description, it's called, in the state, being a self-help county, if you actually raise some local tax money for roads, then they're willing to give you some. If you don't, it's a much harder road to do that. I found going with this group to lobby, talking to assembly members at the Capitol, the few times we've done it, the first thing, if you push an assembly member in a meeting to ask for him to push the governor to give more money locally for all of us for roads, the first thing they ask is, are you from a self-help county? They want to hear that. So, so we'll see what happens with that. Supervisor Rabbits, the chair of the committee this year, or of SETA this year, he's making the subcommittee with himself, Vice Chair Russell from Cloverdale, Kathy Miller from Petaluma, Chris Corsi from Siena Rosa, and myself from Catati. So, we'll see what happens with that in the future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I don't have anything to report out that hasn't already been reported, I did attend the Habitat for Humanity opening, not thinking I was going to be able to make it, and it's always very emotional and very gratifying, especially in fact that Catati was able to help support that with our in lieu fees, and affordable housing fees. So it's nice to see that come to fruition, and some of those families move in there. And, and of course, the Peace and Justice Concert was a wonderful event. And then the only other thing I was thinking of, when they were talking about a grant was acquired for the tree lighting from PG&E to the tune of ten thousand, I immediately thought of Sonoma Clean Power and the Oktoberfest.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, yeah, I, I thought of that right away too, I immediately had a pang of competition, understandably enough, as Sonoma Clean Power did very strongly support Kids Day, and I have a feeling you would want to talk to, whoever's working in this, would want to talk to Kate Kelly, at Sonoma Clean Power, and I'd be happy offline to help you with context, but they're the person that work in the community to support worthwhile events throughout the county, and hopefully into Mendocino in the future, that would be the person to talk to, and I'd be able to have anybody here or in any of the neighboring communities with that.
Is she the former news anchor, Kate Kelly?
To the best of my knowledge, no.
Thank you so much. And now we can move it on to a public comment on non-action agenda items. Ms. Alderman? And keep in mind, these are agenda items, non-action, thank you.
I'm doing mostly the city manager's report.
Thank you.
For one thing, there is, you forgot out of the bus stops, the bus shelter, I have been telling you for eighteen months that downtown project was missing the bus shelter, you had it on the supply list, you didn't have it on, in the plans, it has been, all the trees have been put all but placed like the plans, but there's no bus shelter, it's a matter of accessibility for me. That's the closest Golden Gate Bus Stop. And basically, the other things is you're just not listening to me. And that is part of, you know, justice for all and the freedom of, you, you do treat us unequally, it is documented, that we are given less, George and I especially, are given less times. You are breaking the brown act.
This isn't an agenda item?
Shush, yes, shush.
What's agenda item is this?
Shush, this is, it's on the agenda items.
The non-action agenda item?
There is no on. Please just let me talk, please.
Let's keep to the topic.
Well, I don't think any of you kept on topic.
Please keep to the topic.
Well, please don't talk to me this way. Okay. You don't, I contacted the Open Government Committee, I talked to the organizer at the League of California Cities, and they agree, and they gave me contacts in the Attorney General's office. So you guys need to learn the laws, and you need to stop going on these rants, where you make your own agenda items, where you, you don't give us.
Are you aggressing?
Yes, I am!
I don't hear that.
Please, please stop interrupting me.
Stick to the topic, or I will.
I am!
Okay.
Go ahead and remove me, I don't have a nice lawsuit.
Stick to the topic, please.
I am!
You're not, you're going off all everywhere else. Non-action agenda items.
I think everything was covered by Mr. Obed, thank you. You don't follow the law. You cannot do this, Mr. Moore.
I'm doing it.
You cannot.
Are you sticking?
We have certain laws.
Are you sticking to the non-action?
We have certain rights under the state constitution.
Agenda items?
And you're not, I'm talking about agenda items, and you guys not.
Non-action agenda items. Which one?
Direction of future agenda items.
Okay.
That is my topic, that you are not, you're going on agendas, you're making up your own agendas, and you're going off, and we don't have a chance to do speeches, whenever you go off on these rants and everything, you don't give us a chance to respond, because it's an unofficial agenda item. You need to be following the law, you need to respect our rights as citizens of the state, never mind, I have the law, we have facts, you need to address that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hare?
It's Councilman George Hare. You know, you folks are going to be home and relaxing by eight thirty tonight, so I would say that when you have that opportunity, give someone an extra minute, I think it's apropos. I'd like to speak on the city manager's report and the council's report tonight, like to say to Damian that that was a very well-done and comprehensive report, and, once again, you know, I praise the city, I know it gets a little old, but, you know, in a representative democracy, you know, we, we have a right to, you know, constructively criticize and constructively praise our staff also. And I know that that irritates the council sometimes, when we, when we citizens constructively criticize, but that was a very good report, and it kind of, kind of reminds me back to the time when, you know, City Manager Thompson was here, and often there was nights that she had no report at all, so it is refreshing, and I want to thank you about that. And by all means, council, if any of you want to be recalled, just constructively criticize the city council, and you'll be on your way. I would like to speak about the stamped concrete project down in the historic section. What has not been mentioned in your report, maybe you can bring it up next time, no, no push for tonight, but we had talked about that stamped concrete is not the appropriate substance material for that roadway. That, that concrete has broken down, and unless you've made any huge technical improvements on that technology, that stamped concrete is going to break again. And I don't understand why you didn't listen to it ten years ago, when the citizens advised that that stamped concrete is not going to be durable, that you're going to do it again. And I, I'd like to see some engineering input on this, because we don't have money to waste. And talking about money, we've talked about the downtown gateway project, that we have all these, these matching funds, well, if we look at the matching funds, that was Obama stimulus money, and that was Obama stimulus, stimulus money, one point one million dollars, that the city council themselves told the public that if measure U passed to ban roundabouts, that the city would be forced to send that grant money back to the federal government, and that was a complete lie. You hoodwinked the public, and you kept the money. So, we want to thank President Obama for borrowing again some ten trillion dollars to send this grant money down to these cities, some of that money down to these cities for these projects, money on the backs of our, of our children, backs on the, on the backs of the unborn, you know, because we don't have the money, the federal government is broke, it's borrowing one point five trillion dollars a year to keep up with this federal government spending and their handouts to folks like you, who don't know how to run a city, don't know how to raise funds appropriately, can't attract businesses here to town, play fast and loose with the rules, it's, it's despicable. And you wouldn't call President Clinton.
Thank you, Mr. Hare.
And you wouldn't call President Clinton, impeach President Clinton. You wouldn't call Governor Gray Davis.
Your time is up.
The recalled government, and you should call.
Councilman George Hare. Councilman George Hare.
Time is up. Recalled, councilmember.
Yep.
Recalled.
Yeah, defeated Lisa Moore, defeated Mayor Lisa Moore.
You're out of order.
Defeated.
You're out of order.
Sadly defeated.
We don't have any additional supplemental information after agenda was posted, so with that, unless there's any further comment on there, any councilmembers?
I think we've got plenty of comments.
Okay, and I will adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-four.